All right, welcome everybody. We're gonna get the meeting started here at 6:31. I'd like to ask everyone to stand for the pledge of allegiance.
My allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible and indivisible in its essence.
All right, next order of business would be the approval of the agenda.
If there's no changes, I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as printed for Monday, January 27, 2025.
Second.
So we have a motion by Commissioner Turchi and a second by, was that lieutenant or? And a second by Michelle.
And by the way, welcome Michelle to your first meeting. We'll be kind to you.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, good, nice to have it. Next would be the approval of minutes dated October 28, 2024. See if you have any comments or changes that are incorrect.
If no one here sees any changes, I'd make a motion to approve the minutes of October 28, 2024 as printed.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Turchi and a second by Commissioner Walker. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, nice to have it, okay. With that, we are going to move into the public hearing. So, the Lennox Township Planning Commission will hold a public hearing on Monday, January 27, 2025 at the Lennox Township Hall, 63775 Rashan Avenue, Lennox Township, Michigan, 48050, beginning at 6:33 PM. The purpose of the public hearing is to obtain public comment on the township proposed codified zoning ordinance. Copy of the proposed ordinance is available for inspection at the Lennox Township Clerk's Office, 63775 Rashan Avenue, Lennox Township, Michigan during regular township business hours, 8:30 AM to 12 noon and 1 PM to 5 PM Monday through Thursday excluding holidays. In addition, written comments concerning the proposed ordinance may be submitted to the Lennox Township Clerk by first class mail or in person up until the date and time of the meeting. Good evening.
I'll make a motion to open the public hearing.
We have a motion by Commissioner Turchi. And a second by Gurley. Can we do a roll call just now? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, aye. Would you need a roll call for that? Okay, do we get a roll call?
Turchi?
Aye.
Gurley?
Aye.
Penau?
Aye.
Rocio?
Aye.
Walker?
Aye.
Sutton?
Aye.
Marler?
Aye.
All right, nice to have it.
Evening Commissioners. Back in April of 2023, excuse me, the Township Board adopted codified ordinance for the township. And what they did is they took all the township ordinances regarding things like animal control and assault and battery and many other ordinances, probably 30 different ordinances, and consolidated it into one book or one document with sections, headings for things like emergency services, environment and health. And each ordinance was then reformatted to fit within those sections. It was a man of undertaken. It was done by several individuals in the township and it took almost a year. You can imagine trying to coordinate each document, some of many of which had to be retyped because they were so old, put them in a consistent format in terms of text and numbering, but then looking back and forth, trying to find out which were amended, where the amendments fit and how. And one document indicated that it referred to another document that those sections were all compatible. That was done and that was approved by the Township Board, like I said, in April of 23. One section of the ordinance that was held back at that time was the zoning ordinance because it was the largest ordinance. It was over 200 pages. And that's, if you look in this document I gave you tonight, it just gives you an idea of the sections and chapters of the ordinance. That's Chapter 719. So the zoning ordinance is, like I said, Chapter 719. That was held back because we had a lot of work to do. The ordinance itself was on the township website in several sections. It wasn't a complete ordinance because of different adoptions at different times, many of which didn't coincide with the other. We had a lot of difficulty trying to explain some of our ordinances to developers because, like I said, where they had difficulty understanding the ordinances and we had to explain it to them. So we needed to create this document that was more cohesive. We took each of the sections of the zoning ordinance and recompiled them. We looked at each section to determine how it would fit with the next one. We renumbered them. We did such things as changing the names of things, such as, for example, the Macomb County Road Commission had changed their name eight or nine years ago to be the Macomb County Department of Roads. Around the same time, the Michigan Department of Environmental Quality changed their name to be Eagle Energy, Environment, Great Lakes and Energy. Those are the kind of things that we had to go through and make changes to in the ordinance. In addition, like I said, there are inconsistencies and referred back to a section. They would say things like parking referred to the site plan review section 28 S7 and that ordinance was someplace different and you couldn't compare. So all we did was we manipulated the ordinance, made a lot of spelling, grammar corrections and put it in one cohesive document, all numbered consecutively so that you could follow. That has been outlined, I believe you were sent it. One of the things we did, okay, first off, everything in that ordinance at that time was something that was, we did not add anything new, but I'll further explain what we did. So everything was redone, but nothing was new in that ordinance. We did add the sign ordinance in there, compiled the sign ordinance, but no provisions or regulations the ordinance had changed. Now, while we were doing that, there's been some move at the county part, County Planning and Economic Development several years ago that when they were trying to get development in the community and are steering interested businesses into the county, they were noticing that communities all had different zoning designation names. The zoning districts pretty much stayed the same, but the zoning names were different, okay? We were probably one of the most different ones when it came to industrial. Instead of light industrial and heavy industrial, which 90% of the state communities have, we had something called industrial controlled industrials restricted. I've been doing this many, many years and I had a hard time explaining the difference. But when we told them that industrial controlled is something like the light industrial where everything's contained within a building and industrial restricted is, or controlled is heavy industrial, they start, we said, it's like light industrial, okay? So it's recommended that we change some of the names of the districts to be more common nomenclature for planning. So that's why the other changes are some of the names of the zoning districts have changed specifically light industrial and heavy industrial. So we had to go back and make sure everything was consistent there. So that in fact was the codified ordinance. We were ready to roll with this a few months back and the building department and the clerk's, I mean, building department and the supervisor's office and code enforcement indicated they were having trouble with shipping containers, specifically shipping containers that in some instances should be allowed, but our ordinance specifically said they're not allowed. In addition to that, many residents or farms have them or different places have them, that they're illegal. And, you know, how do you handle them? So the supervisor's office, building department asked that I prepare an ordinance on shipping containers. This is one that I already prepared as they're trying to test it in Port Huron Township. China Township is also looking at it right now. The ordinance is in front of you, if we can, and I pass that out to you tonight. The provisions of the zoning ordinance is under Section 719.69. And if I, that's the other thing that's good about codified ordinances is if there's a section number, the first three numbers always refer to the main book and it'll tell you what that is. So any section in the zoning ordinance would refer to, start with 719, which is consistent with all the chapters in the codified ordinance. For example, everything in the soil removal ordinance would start with 601, that kind of thing. And that's under Section 6, which is environment and health. We're trying to really get this so that it's easy for us, you, and especially potential developers and residents to understand. The changes proposed, though we may proceed, if I may proceed, there are several changes that we would like to suggest to the ordinance regarding storage containers. And we regulate them, storage containers that are allowed in business and industrial districts and storage containers which are allowed in residential or agriculture districts. For example, for the business and industrial district, you're allowed maximum two storage containers. They would be required to come before you for site plan approval. They'd have to get a permit from the building department. They'd have to be reviewed by our fire department. They must meet the current setbacks that all buildings are required to have. They can't be located in parking areas. They can't be stacked. They should be a minimum of 10 feet from each other. They're not allowed to make structural modifications. Can't bring plumbing or electrical into them. They can't store hazardous materials. They can't be used as living quarters. They can't be used as livestock or pets. Then for the residential, you're allowed two, but you have to have a minimum size of five acres for the first one and 10 acres for two and the state requirement apply. These are the changes that we, if you're working with the building department and the supervisor's office, are proposing tonight. And so we're here for that public hearing. So in effect, there's two things we're dealing with. Approval of the codified ordinance, which is just a reassembling of a document with no changes, and then adding to that codified ordinance, if you approve, provisions for the containers.
Thank you. Okay, so it was the case summary. So now we can open this to a public comment. Anybody else have any comments?
If there's no public comment, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Okay, we have a motion by Turchi.
Second.
And a second by Commissioner Gurley. Do we need to roll call to close that? Can I get a roll call please? Turchi?
Aye.
Gurley?
Aye.
Penau? Rocio?
Aye.
Walker?
Aye.
Sutton?
Aye.
Marler?
Aye.
All in favor? Aye, nice to have it. Okay, now the planning commission discussion. So anybody up here have any comments?
I do. Mr. Casten, I wasn't sure, was this in an email that we got earlier or was this just, this was just given out tonight for the containers?
For the containers, I apologize. I thought it was part of the original ordinance and I had invited it to the clerk's office and they had sent it to you. But I realized upon checking that it was not included to your document. That was my fault, that's why I was sent to you tonight.
And the email that came out on the 21st and the one on the 23rd, what was this information supposed to mean?
I don't know which one you're speaking of. If you could tell me, I would try to answer. 21st, what was it regarding?
Well, it has all the zoning districts and it has...
Oh, yeah, it was like the schedule of regulations?
Yes.
Oh, sure.
Were these all approved already or are these?
Yes, that was all approved. One of the issues that we found out was there was missing, simply brought to the fact that the clerk's office, there was no setback information on that chart for manufactured housing. When we looked, like the deputy clerk had looked, we went back, we had to go back 20 years almost, 2006, to find what the manufactured home setbacks were. And evidently, that was never carried forward in the ordinance for 18 years and it should have been. It was approved, but never. So we just amended that sheet to add back what should have been in there on setbacks for manufactured, and that's what you received.
Well, this has, well, one of the questions I had looking over it, it's under the Schedule of Regulation footnotes, under D. I mean, I'm just trying to read this and it says, "In rural areas, a block shall be measured 1,300 feet in each direction from the center axis of a lot in question or to the nearest intersecting street, whichever is less." Is this to determine exactly what? What are we determining, the depth of a front yard?
Yes.
Okay. And then G, the second paragraph, it says, "Where multiple dwellings are permitted or two or more two-family dwellings are proposed, the first dwelling unit shall have a minimum lot area of 10,000 square feet, but the additional lot requirement per unit is listed below. These areas shall not include a kitchen, bathroom, closets or other storage areas."
That's determined density?
Okay.
And that's been in the ordinance? There, I should have mentioned before, once we adopted this and got out the master plan, there are several instances we may want to go back and look at it?
Okay.
Yes.
All right, like I said, I, my head was spinning.
Aye.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so, so all of this has already been approved at some point?
Everything that you have in front of you, with the exception of the naming of the districts and the containers, has been approved at some point.
Okay. I don't know how a builder would build, right? I mean, some of this is really confusing. Okay, I guess I'm gonna have to say that I would think that we have to table this because, I mean, I didn't get a chance really to go through this with these containers, you know, we just got it right before the meeting started. I don't feel comfortable voting on something that I haven't gone over. So I guess I'm making a motion to table this?
Could I have a clarification of the ordinance? Could I have a clarification please? I would, I understand, but I would, if you would, would you approve the codified, recommend approval of the codified ordinance without the containers if that's the way you choose? Because we need to get something on the books.
And that would have to be approved first regardless, right?
Yes.
I understand.
The containers is fairly simple ordinance. I mean, I prefer you could discuss it tonight. We could come up with a resolution, but if you see fit to table it, that's certainly within your, and again, I apologize.
Okay, thank you for the clarification.
So one clarification, it doesn't say, oh, I'm sorry, it does say, "Minimum parcel size of five acres for one container." So if you have less than five acres, you can't even have like a temporary storage container in the driveway like if they're doing any kind of remodeling in the home or anything like that, right?
You can, that's a temporary, yes.
There's rules for, there's rules of the one and the two is the...
That's a temporary.
Yeah. You just have to get a permit, no longer 90 days and that's, the stipulations apply, yeah.
So there's rules for industrial, for permanent on industrial and for permanent on residential and then temporary.
Temporary, correct.
And then any of these provisions, an individual has the right, if they don't meet the conditions, has the right to go to the zoning board of appeals, as in all provisions of the zoning ordinance.
Can I ask, what I consider a business and you're selling storage containers, are you allowed to have more than two?
Yes, that would carry the business, you'd have to submit a site plan for that, yes.
You would have to submit a, I'm sorry, I missed what you said.
You would have to submit a site plan, have site plan approval like any business system, but you could have that. These are for containers used solely as, stored for storage purposes.
And this is kind of off the wall, but I don't know, it's on Ebling Road? Am I correct where that home was built with storage containers? I don't know what township that is on hand.
It's Bruce Township.
Bruce Township? I mean, is that something that we would allow in the township? Is a home built out of storage containers?
As of now, we do not allow that.
Okay.
And this would not allow any, this isn't pertaining to that.
I'm just trying to wait till it's passed.
Sure.
Now, I guess my question is, being that we're setting it based off of acreage, if this were to be passed, I guess, how does that affect all of them that are already out there and existing?
They'd be considered legally non-conforming. Once they were removed or were damaged, they have to be, you know, they could not come back and they have to be in the ordinance.
But they wouldn't have to remove them that are already in place unless they were damaged or...
You know, that's the question we're gonna be asking the attorney because they were probably placed there illegally. So they may, he may make the determination that they may not be what were considered legal, non-conforming at the time of the ordinance, but we don't know for sure right now. I know our ordinance officer, I mean, our ordinance officers over the past seven years have been dealing with a lot of these in place buildings lately, yeah.
Yeah, because I mean, you definitely, you've seen them popping up a lot more in the years and, you know, I think a lot of people living, you know, out here worldly are able to use those as an inexpensive way of storage and things like that, so.
It can be beneficial.
Yes.
But we want to regulate it. That's what we're attempting to do.
Hundred percent. It's like the solar panels that we did, you know, before there was no severance regulations and they were gotten able to, you know, do them as they fit. And then now it's regulated, so I just was curious on how that works because that could be a giant hassle and inconvenience for all the people in the township that are already out there, for sure, so.
There's several of these items on here repeated twice. Like J is the same as V. I, I mean, I...
Yeah, I'm sorry, if you look at that closer. M should probably start A again, M starts for residential.
Okay. So that would need to be clarified.
Yes, we could do that.
Penau, Commissioner Walker, do you have something as well?
Yes, please. You know, my experience comes from the village and, I mean, to me, this is just like a pop-up to me that this has even occurred. Where at the village, if somebody wants it done, they come to the planning commission and we work on those things with the planner. I also heard there's a master plan you just mentioned. So my background is that the planning commission works on all these documents prior to them coming to us for some kind of approval and input. So it's just really strange to me that the planning commission isn't actually involved in any of the actual, you know, even knowing it's going on.
This, and you're absolutely right, many of the small communities, the planning commissions also often write the ordinances. Many more developed and older, I mean, more urban communities have the planning consultants prepare the ordinances and present to the planning commission. It's just the way it's been done here. Well, you have an administrative staff and professional planner that brings stuff to you, asking you for your advice. It's just easier that way in a larger community to do that. But you're certainly welcome to make any suggested changes you want.
I didn't know enough to look at it.
I understand. Again, this is a pretty simple ordinance.
Well, the whole process, I guess what I'm used to is that the planner actually lets us know what's happening. And then the direction is given by planning to, I don't know if the size of, maybe the size, the actual size of Lennox is bigger, but it's not per se a bigger population. But it's just very odd to me that there's just, there's no feedback from your department saying, hey, we got this, we got this, this is what's coming up, this is, you know, you gotta get put...
I appreciate your concern, actually, you're absolutely right. This came up at the end of the codified ordinance because of a serious situation that the supervisor's office identified that I had several emails from the deputy supervisor asking me to include this, to come up with an ordinance and hopefully get it in for your packet because it was a dire situation. That's why it's happening tonight and that's why we didn't talk about it in the meantime. There are certain circumstances that arose that we weren't, we didn't know was gonna happen. Okay.
Have you got any other comments? Commissioner Turchi? Thank you, Commissioner Penau.
Okay, I had a couple of things. The first thing was on the container ordinance. I think maybe it should be reconfigured so there's a section for the industrial and then for the residential and then for the temporary. Because until I read the whole thing, I didn't see, notice where it said a maximum of two is allowed in the residential. So I think maybe it should just be broken down a little bit different. Maybe like number one is, or like, you got P is storage containers and then M one...
I'm sorry, one is what?
Well, you have P as the storage containers and then you have one is talking about the business industrial. But then you have all the letters and then it goes, M talks about residential. So possibly...
And then, I'm sorry, Mrs. Rocio brought that up. That's gonna be two.
Two, okay.
And then storage containers, temporary use would be three.
Okay, that, okay, that was my only suggestion on that. Going back to your letter about, you know, what was, what was changed. In the bottom paragraph, you talked about several amendments need to be considered by the planning commission in the future, including solar, wind, mining, marijuana, tree removal. Solar, we've worked on that one. I don't know why it's not in the ordinances.
It is in the ordinance.
Okay, what's it?
There's been changes in the state law that we need to go back and look at our current ordinance.
Okay.
There's been changes in the state law on solar. There's some changes in the state law being proposed regarding mining. Those are the things, that's why I want to bring it back to you guys in the future.
Okay, okay, the next one was wind.
Yes.
We do have one for wind.
Again, the governor signed legislation this past November that basically takes the control of wind energy systems, solar energy systems and battery storage systems away from local governments and puts them under the jurisdiction of the Public Service Commission. There's a couple of things we can do, but in the near future, I think we need to look at what those things are. That's why I put them in there.
Okay, well, the way it was written, it sounded like we didn't have any of these things in there.
No, it's just in the future.
Because mining, we have it covered on page 125. Marijuana, it's in two places, page 111 and page 132. Tree removal, we have it on page 84. So you're saying that even though these things are in our ordinance, we just need to update them eventually?
We will soon need to update them.
Okay.
Yes.
Because like I said, the way it read, it sounded like we didn't have any of that. I'm like, I know, I've worked on some...
What I was trying to say, Mr. Turchi, is that although it's been recodified, it really hasn't been amended or improved upon to be other than the minor changes that I mentioned and then we will have to go back and do that.
Okay, all right, I just misunderstood your comment then. Thank you.
So I have one question in regards to the, maybe the way we define the storage containers. If we should put some kind of a description as far as the, like the dimensions or the square footage of those, because I know there's, containers are different sizes. So it just might be, because somebody might say, well, you know, I only have an eight by 10, the guy over there has an eight by 20, so I could have an extra one or whatever, you know, something like that may come up because there's not a limit on the square footage.
You could do that, absolutely, thank you.
I just have another comment too, and this isn't pertaining to the storage notice, but just in general, being given something at such a late notice. I don't know if this will set a precedent for other times, for other instances. Say we have a...
Say we have a site plan that's before us, and there is changes made in the engineer department, or somebody was like, oh, well, here, here's the change, could you vote on that tonight? I mean, I guess, I don't want this to be a precedent where this can, can, you know, happen again, you know?
Well, you brought it up then, we could wait on that part.
Yes, but he preferred that we.
But not the whole.
Yes, but he preferred that we did this tonight as well.
Right, so you could.
Yes.
Approve the code of ordinances, and then hold off on that, because it does need to be changed now, and also put in the dimensions and square foot, so there is things that need to be changed on that, so that can be held off.
Okay, well. I know some people have read it while we've been sitting here, I have not, because I want to hear, um, but is there something as far as appearances? Because I have noticed them, some of them look like they came straight off the railroad trucks graffiti, a railroad track graffiti mess that's laying on them. Is there appearances also included in this that have to be painted solid colors, or, you know, paint, I'm sorry, you're talking about paint?
On what they look like.
Oh, whether they look aesthetic?
Yes.
All right, we can, if you're.
I'm just.
I'm telling you where I'm.
Yes, I agree.
You know where I'm talking, but it looks.
Yes, they should be painted to look decent and not half, like they came right out of.
The railroad.
Right, I agree.
I just had a little conversation off the side with the deputy supervisor. We have no objection to your table in the codified or empty containers, and we'll make those cases for you. Would we preferably?
Thank you.
Kindly request.
Thank you.
Please approve the codified.
Sure.
Thank you.
Any, any other last questions or statements we'd like changed on the shipping containers
Well, I'd like to read it this weekend, and then I'll send you anything I got, is that fine?
That'd be great, thank you.
Share with everybody.
Yep.
If anybody else has anything, please email to me.
Will do. Okay, then I would be looking for a motion for the codified, um, changes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the codified zoning ordinance changes excluding the storage containers until further notice.
Mr. Turgeon, would you please make that recommendation to recommend approval to the township board?
Sure, I'll make that recommendation to the township board to approve the codified zoning ordinance, not to include the storage containers.
Second.
So we have a motion by Turgeon and a second by Commissioner Gurley. Turgeon?
Aye.
Gurley?
Aye.
Penell?
Aye.
Rossiel?
Aye.
Walker?
Aye.
Sutton?
Aye.
Meyer?
Aye.
All right, eyes have it. We'll now move to item number six, public comment on agenda items. Anybody like to speak to anything on the agenda?
Did we just approve 8A?
I'm ju, I just have to, we have to go back. We can't do that motion at that time. We were seven, planning commission, we had planning commission discussion. We skipped over, sorry. Well, we went from here, so here.
Oh, it didn't give me like a moment, no.
Yeah, so, sorry, uh, I retract my motion for now, and we'll go on to public comment
So no good? Okay, so no public comment, so we'll move into unfinished business. There's no unfinished business that I'm aware of. Anybody have anything? Okay, then new business, so now 8A is the proposed codified zoning ordinance decision.
Now, reiterate, reiterate my motion to approve, to recommend the codified zoning ordinance to the township board excluding the section on container, on storage containers.
Okay, so we have the motion by Turgeon.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Gurley. Turgeon?
Aye.
Gurley, I'm sorry, you're playing, playing drunk. Penell?
Aye.
Rossiel?
Aye.
Walker?
Aye.
Sutton?
Aye.
Meyer?
Aye.
All right, eyes have it.
Steve, do we need to make a motion on tabling that? Or no? Okay. I'd like to make a motion that we table the, um, ordinance to adding the storage containers until the amendments and adjustments are made.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Gurley.
Second.
And a second by Commissioner Malard. Gurley?
Aye.
Meyer?
Aye.
Penell?
Aye.
Rossiel?
Aye.
Walker?
Aye.
Sutton?
Aye.
Turgeon? Okay, now we move to 8B, the planning commission election of officers. So, I'll reach in the agenda items, I should call for nominations. So I guess we're going to be looking for nominations from the commission. Any member in the commission shall be entitled to submit a nomination, and need not to be recognized by the chair to make a nomination or require a second. Then after there are no more nominations, a roll call election shall be held. The recording secretary will call the roll, and each member, when called upon, shall declare their vote for the office to be filled. The recording secretary shall record the vote and shall repeat them to be sure of their accurate, uh, recording. So.
I'll make a motion to nominate Eric Sutton for position of chair.
Second. So we have a motion from Turgeon, and Commissioner Turgeon, and a second for Commissioner This is to, for the election of officers, for the planning commissioner. Chair. Chair. Turgeon?
Aye.
Walker?
Aye.
Penell?
Aye.
Rossiel?
Aye.
Meyer?
Aye.
Gurley?
Aye.
This is opposed, Eric Sutton has the planning commissioner chair. Mr. Sutton? Your vote?
Aye.
Thank you. Is there any other motions for nominees?
I think we need to, uh, to replace Scott, correct? As the secretary?
Well, basically, you're supposed to do like each, um, only from bad cast experience. You do each office chair step. Like you take, take nominations for the chair, and you vote on that, and then you take nominations for the vice chair, and you vote on it, nominations for the secretary, and you vote on it. So right now, he asks if there was any further nominations for the chair.
There are any on hold on it, all right? Yeah, your chair already passed. So now we're going to go for nominations for the vice chair.
Okay, all right, you can just do it differently, okay.
So now we'll be looking for a nomination for the vice chair.
Who was our vice chair? I guess first you want it again.
There's not much to do. Unless he's absent, that's it.
I'll nominate Commissioner Malard.
I'll second it.
Okay, so we have a motion by Commissioner Walker, right, and then a second by Commissioner Rossiel. Is there any other nominees before we take a vote on that? Okay, roll call. All right, this will be for the vice chair position for. Vice chair. Vice chair is going to be Todd Myler. Walker?
Aye.
Rossiel?
Aye.
Penell?
Aye.
Sutton?
Aye.
Turgeon?
Aye.
Gurley?
Aye.
Item passes. Now you move into the secretary position. Yep. So looking for a nomination for secretary to replace, um, Commissioner Clifford.
It doesn't have to be the layer it appears on, but it has worked and passed, because then they go directly to the board, but it's not necessary. If, if Robert is the secretary, he would just transfer all the information to the clerk's office, and then the clerk's office, because that's what I used to do, I used to like write out online everything on the agenda, and then give it to, you know, copy to the clerk's office, so, yeah.
I nominate Commissioner Penell.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion, um, for a nominee for Commissioner Penell, and a second by Commissioner Gurley. Is there any other nominees? Okay, like a roll call then? See, no, they're not. Means at this point, this will be the request for Secretary Penell to take the position. Motion by Malard. Yes, motion by Malard, second by Gurley. Penell?
Aye.
Rossiel?
Aye.
Walker?
Aye.
Sutton?
Aye.
Turgeon?
Aye.
Item passes. Eyes have it, all right. That moves us on to new business and the public comment. Okay, now number 10, communications and/or committee reports. It's not appear we have any today. Uh, number 11, township planner report, is there anything else you'd like to bring up today?
Uh, excuse me, at your next meeting, I will be bringing you a initial draft of a master plan for you to start working on, to review it. Uh, we'll probably take about 45 minutes to an hour at the next meeting to go through the initial findings and that, uh, and then we'll, uh, give you some time to look at it and come back to the next meeting with some suggestions, so I can continue completing the master plan. Hopefully, we'll have it completed in the beginning part of this year, everybody tuned.
All right, thank you. Uh, number 12, call from the table. Any closing statements?
Nothing.
All right, and I'd be looking for a motion for adjournment.
Motion to adjourn at 7:15.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Penell.
Second.
And a second by Commissioner Gurley. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Eyes have it, meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everybody.